This conference will now be recorded.
Well, it's, uh...
But one of them, uh... There's one from that... So, Marlo, she didn't even hear it. She said, "Oh, my God." She told me that, like, "Oh, you always have to..." But, um, we have... We have... Like, "Oh, he's good."
Exactly.
O M G. Put two and two together. They're the people. Crazy. Cool. Quite a bit.
You know? I don't want my face. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. It's just mine.
Wait, I have a big mac. (laughing). Nobody knows.
You know, I didn't go any further.
Okay, look.
And then show him.
Right. Why don't you?
Yeah.
Oh, well. Uh, my things. (laughing). Am I being loud?
You don't surprise them. I never think you... Just sit around there when you did this. Two tables.
Is that... Very sensitive.
Yeah. And like I said, you have to use the whole mic.
Like, I'm this far away and I can hear it.
Come in loud and clear.
Fair, watch mine. Watch what I'm saying. Watch what I'm saying on my breath. (laughing).
Yeah, I heard that one up a little bit.
I...
We did. Now we don't have it on. It could be all the noise that they go here.
Gotcha.
So, we'll be able to hear you better and...
Mm-hmm. My...
It was tough to hear online, though. It was real loud.
When I was home, I could hear you crystal clear.
I think it's through my...
It's just funny, some people's...
And there's some people that are just louder.
Self-spoken. This is...
I didn't say that. In projection.
Do we have it?
I think we're about two... Hey.
Would you plug it in there? Can I plug?
It's one in the... It's on top.
Oh. Thank you, Zach. Did you get your... Carolyn's?
Yeah.
It's your against the access... Exclamation.
Thank you. Didn't... I checked my mailbox. I didn't... I didn't look up. I checked my mailbox.
Yeah, I'll let...
Where's Garrett? I thought it signed.
Yes, me.
Did...
Six o'clock.
What? Garrett's not gonna be here?
No, he went out to get... He just left. He just went out to get a...
Oh, he's here. I... He's behind the mirror. Okay, I'm sorry. May 10th, Kansas City Council be called to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and moment of silence?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, the first item on the agenda will be to make a presentation to Chief Widdam, so I will come down. If you will come forward, sir.
Hey. The Commission on Professional Production has conferred upon Timothy F. Widdam, designated April 6th, 2021, the designated Fire Marshal in demonstrating a high level of competence and witnessing by your peers by documenting professional educational technical and community service achievements and fulfilling prescribed standards of performance, ethics, and conduct required for the Fire Marshal. Congratulations to Chief Widdam.
Hold on for a minute.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, we consider approval of consent agenda, approval of amendments from April the 26th, 2021, and a statement of bills paid in amount of 334,978.46.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
It has been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Would the clerk please call roll?
Malott?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda will request or comments from the public. I see no one, so we'll move on to the next item and consider a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B2 for consultation with legal counsel for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationships related to the project of City's industrial park.
How much time do we need?
Six twenty-one. Yeah.
Okay. So moved to return at 6:20?
Second.
It has been moved in second to recess into executive session until 6:20. Would the clerk please call roll?
Malott? Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yeah.
I have Scott Anderson recording us as well. Okay.
This conference will now be recorded.
It used to be somewhat there, not there downtown with your cousin, okay? Yeah.
Right.
That's Spain.
Yeah.
Make a motion to return to regular session?
Yes.
Motion second to return to regular session. Would the clerk please call roll?
Malott? Schreiber?
Yes.
Stites?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yeah.
Oh, and Malott, sorry, Malott.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, we consider 2020 financial statements and report of independent certified public accountants. That's back here, Mayor.
Gordon's on the line, too.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Uh, just as a brief introduction, uh, this is the 2020 Financial Statements and Report of Independent Certified Public Accountants that prepared by Gordon CPA. Uh, I always like to remind you that this is the council's audit. While staff has responsibility for preparation of the financial statements, you ultimately are the ones who accept this audit to be in compliance. Uh, again, we do use the firm of Gordon CPA uh, out of Lawrence. Uh, this is their second year in the engagement. Um, and so you will hear from them. Is Sean on tonight? Is that who's with us, or is it... Okay, I wasn't sure. So, Sean Gordon, who's the auditor. I would just like to take a couple of minutes to make a few comments. So, number one, audits don't get, you know, are not just a single item. It takes all year working to get to this point. So, uh, I always... I want to thank especially Sean Millison, our Finance Director. Uh, thank Zach for a lot of the work that gets done over on the budget side. Heather, who handles all of our accounts payable. Uh, so it takes a team of people. Obviously, our department heads are part of that to ensure that the... Things are being allocated to the right places and we go through that process. Um, I also like to thank the council because, uh, the reason we come to you every month with those financial documents is to keep you informed and in the loop and, and, you know, so we can be transparent to the public and they can see what's going on and that we... We have financial policy set that you'll adopt and we move forward. So, the only other thing I would like to say is 2020 obviously was a challenging year for almost every local government or every government out there. I think when you look at where we ended up at the end of the year, uh, with just a slight reduction in our fund balance, with all other things considered, uh, I think we did an exceptional job. We still maintain a strong bond ratings. We still have strong financials. Uh, I think, again, our overall entity's done a great job. And again, it's a team effort from the council to the staff, so I appreciate that. With that, I will turn it over to Sean Gordon, uh, with Gordon CPA. And if there's questions, I'm sure we'll answer them, but he'll go through the financial report that you should have in front of you. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Uh, as Mike said, my name is Sean Gordon with Gordon CPA. We performed the 2020 audit of the city, so I'll go through that audit report that you've seen in your agenda packet or you have in front of you, uh, kind of section by section, and just point out some of the things that you'll... You've seen or need to be looking at. Uh, and then, as Mike said, if you have any questions, just feel free to stop me along the way. Uh, starting with pages one and two, this is called the Independent Auditor's Report. Here we discuss such items as management's responsibilities for these financial statements and then our responsibilities for these financial statements. Our biggest responsibility is to issue an opinion on the city's financial statements for the calendar year 2020. And if you flip to page two, the third paragraph down... Uh, I'm sorry, the second paragraph down is titled, "Unmodified Opinion on Regulatory Basis of Accounting." Uh, that statement, uh, that paragraph states that we issued the highest and cleanest opinion we're allowed to give the city, uh, under state guidelines. So, it reflects very well on the financial management of the city for the calendar year 2020. Uh, flipping forward to page three, this is called the Summary Statement of Receipts, Expenditures, and Unencumbered Cash. Um, here you'll see all of the funds that the city reports uh, in the left-hand column, and then you'll see beginning cash, receipts, expenditures for the year, and then ending cash. So, at the bottom right-hand column, the bottom of the right-hand column, uh, you'll see the total cash that the city had on hand at 1231, 2020. The next section forward is pages four through 10. These are the notes to the financial statements. Um, there's quite a bit of information that's discussed here, including information on the city's accounting policies. There's also information on long-term debt, the Camper Retirement Program, and many other items, as I said before. Uh, this section was mostly the same as last year. There were no requirements, uh, new requirements um, by the state this year that would change any of those note disclosures there. So, like I said, it's mostly the same as what you've seen over the past few years. And then the final section is pages 11 through 32, and these are just more detailed breakouts of those funds that were on page three that you saw before. Uh, most of these statements have comparison to the budget that was adopted for 2020, so you can see how each fund uh, performed compared to the budget that was adopted. Um, and then I want to point out, we had one, um, we had one audit recommendation, and it had to do with, um, some credit card transactions that we looked at. Uh, there were a few that paid sales tax and then a few that also, um, their receipts could not be located um, by that, by, um, by city staff for those, um, those, uh, transactions that we looked at. Um, so that was the lowest level of recommendation, so not, not a major deal. It's just something that we want to point out and say, no sales tax should be paid on transactions and, um, that receipts should be retained for, for every credit card transaction. And then also, there was a, um, kind of a recommendation on, uh, payments to the State Treasurer's Office for bonds, uh, geo-bond payments. Um, that was discussed in the agenda packet I saw, so, um, just wanted to point that out as well. Um, if you have any questions, please let me know. Uh, we had a good audit this year, again, with Sean and Zach and Mike and everybody involved in the audit. So, um, so good, good job to everyone involved on that. So, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Anybody? I know it's a little hard to hear, but anybody have any questions? What would you say about the Oscar season?
Well, one of the... So, uh, so we have city credit card, but mainly, I think it's reference to, uh, gas card receipts typically are not kept. The receipt with the gas card could get a separate, uh, accounting of that. So, there are recommendations that on all gas card users, we keep the actual receipt out of the pump. It's in the one that's out of the pump. That's the primary.
Oh, true. One hour.
Right. So, when we get, get to fill up the gas. So, every, every car, every one of our vehicles has a separate card attached to it, and so the employee has to put in certain information attached to that card. So, you know, who pumped it, when they pumped it, how much they pumped. It's their recommendation. And apparently, it did, uh, the state from a, kind of, bear down on that board, so they want to see a physical receipt with all of the gas really. So, that'd just be the control chain.
So, does the credit card itself not give you... Because, I mean, I will tell you, uh, personally, I mean, when I go back and track gas usage, I use my credit card to show, and that's not...
We... That currently, they want...
That's what you brought.
That's what we do now. So, like I said, if I go, I'm in a city vehicle, and I, you know, we fuel, it's got a car attached to it, and I go up and it's a pump, I have to put in my ID, so they have your ID. So, it gives me all that information, right? Certain things down, because we use those systems because we don't have to pay, I believe, to get the state gas tax for municipal hours. But they want physical receipt.
What does the receipt do differently?
I'm not sure. Sean, I don't know. You want to answer that?
Yeah, it's just, it's a state requirement, and then it's also a city policy to have, uh, receipts, invoices for every single transaction, including credit card transactions. So, we're more auditing to the city's policy, saying if the policy says to have a receipt, then the city needs to have a receipt.
Typically, I mean, we've treated that if, if, so not everybody, but certain people have a city credit. So, if I go out and I purchase something, I get a receipt. I come back and I turn that receipt, you know? Keep it, turn it in. Then once a month, uh, Heather and the department basically allocates and that expense was here, here's the receipt. It gets allocated to Adam in the police department. Who that... So, each department, right? What line it is. This line, that one, that's like, so that's all allocated.
So, are we saying police cars got to save a receipt when they go get gas?
Yes.
That's crazy. That's crazy.
I'm not, I'm not...
Can we...
That is the provocation.
He said that it's our policy, the city's policy, so then let's change it.
I think our policy says the credit cards should have receipt. I don't know that we intended that. Yeah. We certainly can revisit that. That just came out of the... This is their recommendation to the city council, right? Council wishes us to take...
They really know it.
Yeah. Right. So, I, I don't... There was no finding saying that somehow that we felt there was any loss there.
Sure, sure. You see, as, as a former police officer, and, and that what you're going to go through, three tanks of gas, there's three shifts, so each person's going to fill up their car, no matter if they've got a three-quarters of a tank or if they've got an eighth of a tank. When you start a shift, you start to fill up your car. I don't know if that's exactly how it works here. Anyway, um, that's how... So, you could potentially be putting gas, three receipts every single day for every single car that's out there. I mean...
And is that a state...
Then what happens when you lose a receipt? You know, for whatever reason. I mean, do you... Now you're starting to think about discipline and it's just, it doesn't seem like the right direction.
Is that a state statute as well, or state rule? Or is that just ours that we can...
Sean, can you address? I don't, I don't know what the... Is it... I know you said the state. So, they have a state statute.
This was that, uh, this says that any purchase should be documented uh, with a supporting invoice or supporting receipt. I'd have to look up that statute. I don't know off the top of my head, but there is a statute regarding that.
So, essentially, we could use the credit card statement for that state statute?
That is what we have initially done. So, we have, our credit cards are a, you know, through a company that once a month, right, we get some prior gas credit card. They send it to us in a phrase that by individual vehicle, departments, et cetera. So, some department, like police department, they have so much more. They need to have some additional internal things that they do to look at. So, what kind of mileage we're getting on cars that we have. They want more data. The car that we use for general city hall stuff might be driven by two, three, four people, but it's still in the gas car. And if I'm in it and it's down to a quarter tank, I'm going to go somewhere, I'm going to go fill it up. But two more people may drive it before it gets filled up again, or I want to, I'm on a trip and I need to go somewhere, and I'm going to drive it, you know, fill it up, and I'm going to drive it to say, lose it all, and I'm going to fill it up, and I'm going to come back and fill it up again. You know? Typically, you know, if I could keep, you know... I don't get receipts, that's just me. But, but the credit card already has like, okay, where we don't bought, where it was bought, what time it was bought, you know, who the driver is based on the credit card on the card, right? And it's a credit card, but it's not a credit card in the sense of, then we have other credit cards, right? If I'm traveling and I use the city credit card to pay for my hotel, and I come back with all these receipts back, I do. Just...
Yeah, and I, I totally agree with that.
That's...
So, not for... Your fuel is tracked, you got your, you're putting your employee ID number in there. It's you, you're verified, you're putting the mileage in there. But I'm not talking about those, so...
Just a guess. Okay. That's their recommendation, and so we take those recommendations, and sometimes we can't beat all the recommendations, right? I mean, they're, they're, they're kind of best practices, and so we'll, we'll grant that. But if that's our only significant, I mean, I call significant, I mean, that's, that's a fairly, uh, limited item. You know, I will just restate, uh, because I, again, train currency uh, about statutory violation. What that has to do is 20 days before we pay, pay the bonds, we give a notice and prepare, uh, things like ACA through the bank. And that plus we got 20 days before, and I think we got one over 18 days before. But statute says you have to do it 20 days before. Solve that process. Not, you know, it's not something we want to do, but I mean, we should have done it 20 days before, it's 18 days before. Correct. Outside of that, again, I think, you know, if you look at our, our ending cash balance, you know, we reduced it by 30,000, or we anticipated reductions. And when you consider just on the revenues from the casino, we probably lost well over $120,000 in revenue. We lost the ceiling. I think we had a substantial year, all things considered, for the last year. I mentioned, you know, extra overtime, you know, any number of things that we had to do because of COVID. There's the purchases, everybody, I think, it's an audit. And I think a lot of that goes to everybody that's seen that. But Mayor, it is, uh, your, it is the council's audit to accept the audit, correct, in the audit report?
I have a question about that, really. Like, since it's an entire report, we just got it tonight, would it be, um, appropriate to vote on accepting it or approving it at our next meeting? Do you see us have to vote over anything?
Yeah. That's... I, I... If we didn't set it up before, I, I thought it did. So, then, yeah. Then we said, okay. But you had... But if you want to hold...
I'm sorry, I must have missed that.
That, that's why, if you prefer, I mean, that's, that's what's called, it's your audit to accept. You can present it to me. Uh, you can either accept it, but I agree, you can accept it.
Is there anything, any reason that if we're waiting two weeks?
I mean, if such a question comes out, it's not going to change the numbers.
Right.
Or, or the, you know, the documents, the questions that come out, we certainly can't vote in any manner that just wants to... But at the end of the day, I don't think this one... There's nothing in there that's going to change.
I think, I think, then in my opinion, in fairness, then, if we have somebody that wants to review it closer, then we just wait for two more, and then, if that hurts in any way. I don't know, do we make...
Do you want that in a motion, or just consent? If there's consensus, we'll just put it on the agenda for final adoption.
Any other council members have any comments to make on this subject?
On the Fourth Street, Brimwood Fund?
Yes.
What are those monies for? The 322 or 26 thousand?
Yeah, that, that's what's tied, so... And I'll, I'll answer the question, I'll give you a little background too, but... So, those are the monies to do Fourth Street related to the quiet zone that are outside the quiet zone. So, north of the railroad tracks. So, if you think about 100 feet either side at the crossing, that's the quiet zone. The portion north and south, we're, we're going to redo the pavement, putting curb better, update the sidewalks. That was bond dollars that were set aside for that particular project. So, one of the things we did out of, really out of prior years uh, to kind of manage this better, uh, so when we, when we issue bonds, they come in to, uh, the fund, I think, 301, so CIP fund. So, they all come in, and that's the project bond. We then allocate those to the various projects, and we do that because the interest earned has to either be allocated to the project or it gets, uh, used for bond payments. This way, we can keep, we can allocate the interest properly. So, what we do is we say, there's this much money in the CIP base account, and say Fourth Street represents 8% of that. Whatever interest we earn, we put 8% back towards that project. When the project closes out, you can take those funds and any excess used, again, go back to the bond, thinking of the bond fund, or you potentially could re-allocate those funds for another project that should be either already approved or future projects.
So, if, if the quiet zone actually just fell through and we just, we decided they were good, that money that's in there right now could go...
It would just reallocate.
Realallocated, or...
You have to go through a process.
Or go back to paying off the bond dollars.
Correct.
Right.
It can always go back, it can always go back to the bond fund for the payment of, of, you know, principal and interest. Now, you can't pay them off, so to speak, early. I mean, you can't, you know, it's not like your house is certain where you can just pay it off. Bonds are callable at some points, and normally... Bonds are callable at some point, so normally bonds are 20 years. They have a call date at 12 typically, somewhere in that range. So 12 years, if you got enough cash in, you can pay those bonds off. But you couldn't pay them off in year nine or 10.
Just because you had the extra money.
Right. You, you can do what they call an advanced refunding, but that's longer discussion. Those are, right now it's allocated to a project which has bid, uh, contractor, you know, selected, again, it's a county project, funding the additional work. We're waiting on the break room, uh, to do the final sign off and that's a process. We can talk about the rest of it later, but that's why, that's why each of those projects are allocated now in our books.
Okay, unless I hear any other comments, we will then return to the next calendar meeting. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, let's consider this 2021-05, setting a date to conduct a public hearing regarding a dangerous and unfit structure at 9711 Steel Road.
Mayor, members of the council, so you may be aware of this property at 9711 Steel Road. These are some pictures of it. It is a property that has been abandoned for some period of time. Uh, we've had active code cases. Uh, I say active in the sense of, uh, code enforcement, you know, had cited them, those went to court, they've been sitting in court. There was some, uh, challenges with the ownership of the property. Ultimately, the person whose name property's in has passed away. So I think it's in some kind of a, you know, ownership or trust or in some other situation. It also, as I understand, is on a tax sale for the future, uh, coming up whenever the next tax sale is at the UG. But as you can see, uh, generally the building is in poor condition. We believe it to be unsafe, unfit for habitation and a dangerous structure. So when this happens, we have our code enforcement officer, uh, our fire chief or a member that, you know, that he assigns, in this case, the fire chief, inspect those properties, uh, to, uh, determine what the condition of it is. Again, based on those reports which you have in your packet, uh, we do believe that this is a dangerous structure. And so what happens is we first come to you with this report. And then, uh, if you believe that, you concur that this is potentially a dangerous structure, we then have to call a public hearing. Uh, as it says in the agenda memo, that has to have a period of time between when we pass a resolution calling the public hearing and having the public hearing. We would then have the public hearing, I believe, uh, we have that set for, uh, when was it? June 28th. At that public hearing, uh, interested parties could come, will have to notify. Everybody that has liens or other, you know, any, any relationship to the property, they can come before the council and say, this isn't really a dangerous building, it's not, you know, it is fit for human habitation. Maybe they say.
They have vested interest in it to be able to make those.
Uh, they could come speak to it, but I mean, because it's a public hearing, but I mean, I think you would give weight to somebody that actually has control of the property. And then you have the ability to say, hey, we're going to give you this many days to demolish the building or bring it up to code. And by up to code means would have to meet current building codes, current, all the current codes. If they fail to do that, then the city has then the right to go in, demolish the structure, clear the lot and, and at that point, generally we're, you know, that's our part of it. So the ownership doesn't change ownership, it stays with that owner.
But if it's on the next pack cell?
Yes.
I guess I am correct. Why are we doing this?
Well, number one, we don't know on the, I mean, we, we have a good relationship with them on this, so depending on which way it goes, them being the UG and the land bank. So typically what has happened, we've had one other like this specifically where it went to tax sale, uh, there was no bid, nobody bid on the property. Then the land bank took it into the land bank, the land bank transferred it to us. And then we use the contract for deed to put it out there and say, any interested parties want to bid on this project to come demo it or rehabilitate it to our standards, you can do that, but as a contract for deed worked, they have to put the money up, right? Whatever that, whatever that price is, they put the money up. If they fail to perform, they don't get it, they don't get clean title to the property and we still own it. That's really the preferred to have ownership of it. And we're doing this process because it, it very well could lead to, we have the public hearing, there is a determination that it's an unsafe, unfit structure. It goes to the tax sale, whether the current property owners take it out of the tax sale or somebody buys it, it's still an unfit property and they still have to then comply with whatever your requirements are.
I guess what I'm saying is if the tax sale is next week.
Right.
I don't know when it is.
Right.
But I mean, if it's next week.
Yeah. It, it won't be before July, it won't, as I understand, that tax sale right now is tentatively scheduled, I think in July.
If somebody did purchase it.
Right.
He better to allow them to use their money to demolish it.
Oh, absolutely. That is the preferred. What, what this does is it, but once it's determined to be an unfit structure, so right now it's not, there's been no determination, it's a code violation, right? But once it's determined to be an unfit structure, they have two options. Demolish it or bring it up to code, right? Put a new roof on it, redo the walls, clean up the interior, bring electric plumbing, sewer. I mean, this, you know, you know, this property probably would be, the cost to do that probably exceed the cost of demoing the building and building something more than likely, right? But.
This action does not require us to demolish the building, as I understand.
No, that's correct. Even if we determine it.
People that will control at some point in the position to have to do.
Right. What, what you're doing is you're. You would be ordering the property owner to deuce, if you have the, if you have the finding after a public hearing, then you would order that property owner to take those actions. If that property owner fails to take those actions, you have the right, you don't, you're not obligated, you then have the right to go in there and take those actions. Let's just say it's demolition, you can go in there and demolish the property, file a lien on the property, right? You, you do get the lien filing on the property. And that lien sits there until somebody wants to come and buy it or do something else with
At some point, somebody else is going to date.
Right. And even if it goes to tax sale, you, you, you still, the tax sale doesn't eliminate that it's an unfit, unsafe structure. It would eliminate if there was any liens on file. So what we have done, and I'll give you the, I'll give you, we, we had almost exactly the same situation on Fifth Street and, and we did pretty much the same thing, right? We terminated it to be unfit. The tax sale then, uh, went to tax sale. Nobody bid it because the amount of taxes on it was, you know, four, five years old. But, you know, everybody looked at it and said, you know, I gave you a hundred bucks for it. Well, you, you know, you have to pay all penalties, interest and taxes, so it's thousands and thousands, so nobody wants to spend that. Then the, then the land bank has the right, right? I mean, and, you know, that's why they're a land bank, can accept that property into the land bank, right? What they have, what they did on the Fifth Street property is they then deeded the property to us. It was still just kind of in this same condition. And that's where we used the contract for deed and said, look, we will give you clean title to this property when you do these following things. And it would be cheaper than necessarily what the taxes are. I mean, I think on Fifth Street, I, you know, five hundred, a thousand dollars, something like that, right? But they cleared the lot, made the lot ready, right? Clean lot, and now they're building a new house on it, right? That's, that's the ultimate goal is you want somebody to come in here, clean up this, this eyesore to the public. It's a safety issue, right? I mean, whether people are sleeping in there or staying in there or fire, I mean, right? It, it, it's a hazard to the community. What you want to do is eliminate the hazard and hopefully have something new built on that piece of property.
No, we like demolish it before the tax sale.
No, we will not.
That was my.
Yeah, no.
We would do the work and then we go to the tax sale.
Yeah, I mean, unless we find out, I mean, now what could happen, right? It goes to the tax sale, uh, or, or the tax, it doesn't, you know, it gets pulled off the tax sale, right? For some reason, uh, the property owner goes to court and gets a, you know, gets the judge to say a payment plan on it or something like that. And then they don't do anything with it. You may then want to, as a council, say, okay, we gave you this time to do this, we've given you an extension to do this, you're now not doing this. So guess what? Glad you paid your taxes, but we're still going to demo this building because you're still not in compliance.
And that's why it's good to get this rolling now.
Yes, absolutely.
So what do you need?
Adoption of the resolution 2021-05, setting the date of June 28th for the public hearing.
Make motion to adopt resolution 2021-05, setting the date of June 28th to hear the recommendation for the unfit structure 2711 Steel Road.
Okay, it's been moved in second to adopt resolution 2021-05 with a, let me finish then you ask. Saying June 28th as a public hearing. And we have a question.
Does this include the building, the outbuilding?
Yes, all, all buildings on the property.
And is this a septic system on this property?
I believe it's septic, yes.
And so they would include removal of the septic system as well?
Removal or, or you can abandon them, you know, capital and build them, but, but yeah, we require the, that, the product to the same. Pay it in septic.
If there are no further questions, would the clerk please call roll?
Malot? Shriver?
Yes.
Stites? Adams? Kayhart?
Item number six, your presentation regarding quarter one budget review for 2021.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, this is our first quarterly review of the 2021 budget. Uh, we've been doing these for a last number of years, just to keep everybody up to date on budget performance and keep an eye on trends and to see where we're at as far as expenditures and revenues. Primarily, we're going to focus on the general fund as we tend to do, but we'll touch on all the other funds as well. But to go through the first three months of data. So what we focus on, on our revenue side is the, the, the major revenue sources, which is defined as any revenue source over a hundred thousand dollars that we get into the general fund. Uh, this is our 2021 property tax. Uh, the table shows where we're, where we are typically at, at this point in the year, um, from 2016 to 2020. Normally, we're at 57% of what we end up collecting at this point in the year. Right now, we're at 62% of our adopted budget. Part of the reason for that is, is we noticed in our March distribution, uh, it was a higher than normal distribution that we got at that time, which kind of pushed us over that line. We didn't really know why that we got a higher distribution, so we reached out to county treasurer's office. They didn't really have a good explanation for it either. They did know that the distributions in March were, were up, um, across all the taxing jurisdictions, so it's not something that's isolated just to us. Their suspicion is that it has something to do with the timing of some of the stimulus payments towards beginning of the year and the end of last year that, you know, more people just pay their property taxes on time this year. So, um, that puts us in a, you know, a better position in terms of total adopted budget for property taxes. Sales taxes, uh, typically we're at 24% of, of our total, uh, year-end collection for sales taxes. Right now, we're at 26% of where we had adopted. We budgeted pretty conservatively for sales taxes because when we adopted the budget, remember this is August of 2020, lot of uncertainty in the air as far as how sales taxes are going to shake out. So we were, we were pretty conservative in our estimates. Right now, what we're seeing is that, you know, we're outperforming and probably on a, much of the state is outperforming, um, uh, where they thought they would be in relation to sales taxes. Uh, for city sales taxes, we're pretty much right on track where we budgeted, uh, where we should be based on how we budgeted. Um, there's not a lot of variability in our sales tax collection, but we don't have, you know, a ton of a real diverse set of cash registers out there. So that's, we've done a good job of kind of isolating and being able to track that and be able to be pretty accurate as far as how we're going to end up in city sales taxes. Uh, city use taxes is, is currently outperforming budgeted estimates at about $60,000 right now. Uh, and similarly, wine dot county sales and wine dot county use taxes are significantly, I shouldn't say significantly, they're noticeably overperforming where we thought they would be at this point in the year. So a good sign, good place to be at, at this point of the year. If you remember a couple of years back, we started off really strong in sales taxes. The whole state kind of tanked in sales taxes for some reason, but because we performed so good in that first quarter, it gave us a little bit of that cushion. And because we budgeted as conservatively as we do, you know, we're, we're right on track where we need to be on sales taxes and probably performing a little bit better than, than, uh, where we thought we would be. Franchise revenue, uh, we're at, uh, about 22% of total collections for what we had budgeted. Typically, we're at 24%. Right now, I mean, we're a little bit behind where we, where we typically are at this point in the year, but it's not, we're still on track to perform right around that $520,000 in adopted revenue. So if, if, you know, what we kind of do for all of our major revenue items is that we've got a kind of dynamic tracking of them. So from January to February, franchise fees tend to go up 3% or something. And as those, as we fill in those, those tracking with real-time numbers, that helps dictate what we think that the end of the year is going to be. So right now, we're a little bit behind, but we're still within about, you know, eight to $10,000 if trends hold as, as they have in the last five years of ending up near that 520,000 mark. So not too concerned with that. Gaming revenue, um, 320,000, as Mike mentioned earlier, we were at a lot of revenue from gaming last year. Typically, we're closer to that $400,000 mark, but you know, again, uncertainty in where we're going to end up made us pull that back a little bit. But that said, we adjusted and how we adjusted seems to be right on track with how we're performing. So typically at this point of the year, we're at 25% of where we collect, makes sense, you're at 25% of the year. And gaming revenue is pretty stable or has been in the past. So if we were to collect 320,000, right now we'd be at 25% of that. So right on track with those kind of budget estimates as we laid them out when we adopted the budget last August. The one thing I will point out, now we've started, this is, this captures the first three months of revenue. We do have data from April and May in gaming revenue. May is starting to perform a lot closer to what we're used to. So typically it's a, you know, between 38 and 40,000 we can count on per month from gaming revenue. May, we ended up at 37,000, so that's the latest month of data that we have. And that's, if, if we, if, if that is the new normal, then we're going to outperform 320. We may not get to normal levels where we typically are with gaming revenue, but if, if May is an indication of how the rest of the months are going to perform as far as the revenue standpoint for gaming, we should be pretty healthy, at least a lot healthier than we were last year in gaming revenue. Court fines, um, this one's harder to predict as we, I mean, it's, it's kind of, there's a lot of variables in, in court fines, how we determine our estimates for the year end. It's a rolling kind of average of the past five years. That keeps us from overestimating if there's a, 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 a good year, bad years kind of anchor us to a, a good spot. And that's been a pretty reliable as far as, as how that's going to turn out. We're at 29% of where we had budgeted, which is higher than where we typically are at this point of the year. Last year, uh, last two years, I should say, kind of pulled us down in those first two quarters. But again, not a whole lot of surprises coming out of court fines and I'm, I think we'll end the year, uh, north of that $375 figure. Ambulance fees, this is another one and, and, you know, we've not dived too much into the granular data, but typically we're at 26% of revenue at this point of the year. Right now, we're at 30% of, of budgeted revenue, so overperforming there. I know that we've made some changes internally and as far as our, our billing structure and our relationship with the other billing agents, so that might have some factor in there. It might just be that people are paying their ambulance taxes or their ambulance fees more on time. Again, they might have more cash on hand due to stimulus payments or whatnot that they're putting towards those, uh, areas. But short story there is we're, we're performing pretty well as far as ambulance fees go. Motor vehicle taxes, um, you know, kind of the similar story of what we've talked about before, we're a little bit ahead where we typically are. Not a whole lot to report there. Uh, these are pretty steady, so, uh, I don't imagine there's going to be too much variability as far as how we end up in 2021 in that revenue item. So big picture, um, so what this shows is the blue lines is how those, each, each of those years from 16 to 20, where they're at typically, or where they were at in their first quarter. And then the orange line shows the, where they ended up at the year end. Uh, between fiscal year 2016 and fiscal year 20, we averaged to be about 38% or 4% of where our final revenue figures end up being. So at the end of March, the last four years, excuse me, the last five years, we are at a little less than 40% of where we end up at the year as far as revenues go. Um, that's front loaded because of the, the, the payments or the, the payment schedule for things like property taxes. This year, we are ahead of, you know, significantly, I would say about 4% where we typically are at, at, um, at this point, where we would expect to be at this point of the year. That's probably got a lot to do with how conservative we were in our estimates with all the uncertainty going on, but it's a good position to be at as we, as we go into the rest of the year. Similarly, on the general fund expenses side, we are typically at this point of the year, again, it makes sense. If you take an average of the previous five years, we're at 25% of expenditures, 25% of the year. Right now, we are at 23% of expenditures, uh, at 25% of the year, which is the lowest it's been in proportion to the final expenditure figure since 2016. So not only are we outperforming in a lot of the revenue areas where we don't really have a lot of control of, it's just kind of how those cards fall and, and how we, and what we can collect. But the areas where we do have control on in general fund expenditures, we're being responsible with the resources that we've had. We're being cautious, we're, you know, making sure that we're keeping an eye on, on trends. This, there's still a lot that happened at this point of the year. And that translates, translates us into being, you know, less, spending less at this point of the year than what we typically have in past years. So again, revenues are up, expenditures are down. That's typically a good spot that we want general fund to be in. Any questions on general fund before I go to the other funds? So the other funds, these will be a little bit more high level. Um, debt service fund, that's, uh, showing you our quarter one revenue versus our quarter, or our, excuse me, our, our budgeted 2021 revenue. Uh, same thing with expenditures there, not a whole lot to report as far as, as that, that revenue is, you know, buying large property taxes and pilot payments. Special sales tax, again, we're a little bit higher where we typically are at this point of the year because sales and use taxes are performing a little bit stronger than what we had thought. Not a whole lot to report out of there. That small expense out of there, I believe were some, uh, park equipment that we had gotten, uh, previous authorization for. And this, it ended up getting spent in 2021. Uh, there are some lease payments, I should say, that are going to come out at, uh, later on this year. Regularly scheduled lease payment at a special sales tax fund. So we'll, we'll catch that number, that 389,000, um, depending on how some of the street projects and park projects go. Special hay, uh, special highway fund, these revenue comes from, um, the state essentially gas tax. So not a whole lot to, uh, uh, report on there. It's, there's no surprises in there. It's a regular allotment that we get throughout the year. Nothing really to report in economic development. We didn't budget any, uh, revenue coming in there. We typically don't. So, uh, what's built in there as far as expenditures goes, a lot of estimates as far as, you know, if we, different contracts and partnerships that we have that we typically, you know, unless, so, if something comes out of the economic development fund that's going to raise to this level, then this group will hear about it before we get to these kind of reports. Solid waste fund, uh, I will point out in the solid waste and the sewer fund, rather than using the GL numbers, uh, which all of these numbers are based on GL numbers to this point. What I use for the solid waste and the sewer fund is our utility billing data, which is real-time information. So it's versus the, the kind of month lag that you get from the general ledger. So that's why if you look at, uh, the first three months financial reports from your last council meeting, the revenue for solid waste fund and for the sewer fund are going to be different because you're, you're looking at, they're two different, essentially reporting on two different timeframes, even though the dates are the same. But this is real-time data, what we've collected as far as, uh, trash and recycling fees. Um, right on track, we're not a whole lot to be concerned about at that point. The reason expenditures are higher than the revenue at this point is because we had to, we did our final payment to waste management, what ended up being about that $8,000 figure that we had talked about. Um, typically, that payment is done in, typically, we have two payments in December, uh, to get to 12 payments for the year. This year, because we were going back and forth with waste management about what they actually had due based on their service level at that time, that payment was pushed to 2021 and it was about that, that $8,000 range. So less that expenditures are keeping pace with revenue pretty much month to month, which is good. Uh, similarly, for the sewer fund, we're, we're performing pretty, pretty well. Uh, Mike and, and the sewer staff have got the, the, uh, wastewater treatment contract pretty well figured out. There's not a lot of surprises. We know the, the estimated flow that we had out of that, that, uh, infrastructure is, we could pretty much count on those estimates being accurate going forward, and we've got a pretty tight handle on that. There, in the expenses side, we typically don't hit that 700, you know, that, the final expenses unless there's major repairs that need to be done for the sewer infrastructure. Uh, but that's why that money is built into there in case we have contracts that we need to, to enter in to fix a, a major issue that needs to be fixed in, in an emergency situation. Uh, so that's all for the discussion as far as how the budget's been performing to this year so far. Um, any questions on any of that? So the last two slides, I do want to start talking about budget development for the, the 2022 budget because it's going to look a little bit different than how it has in the past. So this table kind of lays out a tentative timeline of what, what this group can expect as far as budget development goes. So June 1st, the county is going to send us our preliminary valuation data. That happens at that same time every single year. Uh, June 14th, we'll come back and have another budget presentation with this group. Uh, doing a little bit more forecasting with some of the information that we've, we've shown here to get an estimate of where we're going to end up revenue and expenditure wise at the end of 2021, uh, which will set our fund balances for 2022. June 15th, and this is where the, it starts to get different. So the tax lid is no more, it is not a consideration that we need have during our budget season. The legislature has made some changes to that. The changes that they've made is that now, so June 15th, or by June 15th, we may get it sooner, the county clerk is going to calculate something called a revenue neutral rate for each taxing subdivision. So the UG county clerk is going to calculate their, their revenue neutral rate for the city of Etterville, the city of Bonner Springs, the school district. And what that is, is the tax rate for the current year that would generate the same amount of property taxes as levied the previous year using this year's valuations. So it's essentially an equation that says, if you want to raise exactly the same money, amount of money in property taxes as you did last year, this is what your mill levy needs to be to do that. Um, we'll get that information around that time. We'll present that information to you, uh, by the end of June to talk about kind of the mill levy implications. The other new parts of the tax bill at the state level are that if we want to exceed the revenue neutral rate, then it requires another round of pub, a, a, a separate public hearing outside of our public hearing that we have for our budget adoption. Um, a lot of, it, a lot of communities, based on our conversations with the league, you know, it's, uh, they're planning on holding this, this hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate because the revenue neutral rate doesn't really, it's good information to have. Uh, it doesn't really take into consideration a lot of the factors that, and the nuances that affect municipality to municipality, us especially with as much higher IRBs that we have out. So if you wanted to exceed that rate, you need to have a separate public hearing. So right now, the tentative calendar, and this will fall into place a little bit later on and, and firm up as we move on through the summer, is that if we, if we want to exceed the revenue neutral rate, if we come back with a budget that, that would exceed that, then we need to notify the county clerk of that intention by no later than July 20th. Then we schedule a public hearing to happen no earlier than August 20th and no later than September 20th. And again, that's different from the budget hearing. So depending on how those conversations go, it's going to affect the rest of this calendar. Um, and I'll get into a little bit more of the, my concerns about the revenue neutral rate on the next slide. But if we do that, August 9th, we'll have our regular mid-year budget report, the same report that, that I'm giving you now. Only to be the first six months of data. Uh, August 23rd, if we were to hold a revenue neutral rate hearing, that's kind of recommended where I would stick that, that hearing at. So we could have the revenue neutral rate hearing, decide if we want to exceed it. If we do want to exceed it, then we would set the maximum budget, if we do or don't, I should say. Then we would set the maximum budget and then call for the public hearing on the budget adoption, which we, we do every year. And then at that point, uh, it pushes the budget adoption date to, from August 25th to September 20th. So if that's the timeline that we follow, then we would be doing our budget adoption, our final budget adoption around that mid-September timeframe. So the reason why I think that, that, you know, a, a revenue neutral rate hearing is more likely than not in our case is that, so as assessed valuations go up, the mill levies will go down to meet that resolute, the revenue neutral rate. So that's not uncommon. That's typically, that's actually what we've been doing for the last couple of years. Assess valuations go up, the county, on the county side. And in order for us to control property tax bills for our evidence, we drive our mill levy down because it's the only one that we can control. We've been doing that the last couple of years. We've been lowering our mill levy for the last four or five years in response partially to these assessed valuations going up. We can still lower the mill levy, but if we don't lower it to the degree that would make it revenue neutral, then we would be in violation of state statutes, which comes with it some penalties. Additionally, there's no considerations made to expiring IRBs. Now, the timing of that, we always have to do this dance around budget time because we have to figure out what IRBs are coming back on the tax rolls, which don't show up in your preliminary evaluation, but they do show up in your final. So, you know, the worst-case scenario would be this group decides, we don't want to, we've got our revenue, our revenue neutral rate, let's say it lowers the mill levy three mills. You know, we, that's, last year, we lowered it a, a little bit more than two. So let's say the revenue neutral rate that the county gives us lowers the mill levy three mills. We say, okay, we budget according to that. But then properties come off the tax rule or come back onto the tax rule from IRB, drives up the, the valuations at the final valuation after our budget adoption, and it drives down that revenue, revenue neutral rate. And so even though that we passed a revenue, revenue neutral rate because of factors that are outside of our control and outside of this timeline and irrespective to anything going on in the IRB level, we would still be in violation of state statute.
But we would, we would know in advance businesses that are coming off of IRB.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we know what it, right.
It's not like we're going to, we set this and then we go, oh, shoot.
No, yeah, and we, we.
We know that in advance.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we, uh, get that revenue neutral rate, and then if that allows us to, you know, and if we feel comfortable with the three or, or whatever that, uh, mill rate reduction would be.
Right.
The scenario, um, we would feel comfortable knowing that, that it's not something that catches off guard.
No, not, not typically, no. It's just a matter of, and we did this essentially last year too, whenever, when we published our budget, our, our maximum budget, it was a different level to what we internally knew it was going to be because of the, the IRB implications of that. It's just, it's a, it's, it, it's another moving target in, in this process that this group just needs to be aware of as we continue to move forward with budget development.
I think, we, and again, it's typical state legislation, stuff happens and then the weeks and weeks, et cetera. But, you know, that, they didn't take into consideration, I mean, there were a lot of push, right? For things like IRBs and for us, over the next several years, as you know, we have a number of properties coming off. But they're not, so, so, you know, if that property is under an IRB, its valuation on the tax roll side is zero. And then all of a sudden, they say, well, we're going to put that $29,000 piece of property, now we're going to put it on the tax. And so, you know, it alters it. But what they don't give you is, but they've been paying pilots, you know, for X, for 60% for the last 10 years. You get no credit. So that's, that's, that's the thing that's there. And then the second problem we've had, while we know when these IRBs are coming off and going on, that is not always the case with the county in the sense that we know something, we know it most of the off, but they still show it on the tax roll. I mean, that's happening on preliminary. They're still showing it, you know, well, they're showing it on the tax roll and on the high, so they're double capturing that revenue book. If they do their calculation based on that, then all of a sudden, they're taking both things.
Well, that happened, right?
Yeah.
And we ended up getting credited back on that, right?
Well, we, we, we budgeted it. And if you remember, that year, what happened is they came back, they raised the mill levy and said, no, don't raise the mill levy because we built that scenario in, right? That, that, that's the concern is, are we going to get, during this process, if I'm not, you know, is that number accurate relative to, but predominantly IRB? The other one that I, it doesn't fully take into, as I asked, is, uh, if there is taxes that is over at, uh, the court of taxes, so they have a tax appeal out there. Normally, those are small, but when you had, you know, at the time, middle of refrigeration, and all of a sudden, they're like, oh yeah, you owe $2 million back. That's not captured, so all of a sudden, you're about, you know, a million or $2 million in tax revenue. And, and you don't know it. That, that's, that's the challenge of, of this right now. Now, we may learn more, we may learn more as we move along and find out, okay, this is what it is. I mean, there's a lot of debate at, at legislature about exemptions, no exemptions, whatever. You know, they took the position, we're not going to do any exemptions, right? We're just going to make this a, a flat process. And I can tell you, when I was, you know, working in another state, we had a very similar situation. Now, they, they allow adjustments by percentages, so we're sort of deciding without having a second public hearing. But they did the same, they didn't call it a revenue neutral rate, but effectively the same thing. This year's revenue was the last year's, uh, you know, this year's mill levy, last year's values, you know, you're going to generate the same dollars. But you didn't have IRBs, you know, we did, certain things in the budget there weren't the same. So I think it's just going to be, I, I, I think it's going to be one of those situations, just like we do back. You may, you may go ahead and say, we're going to adopt a maximum budget and a maximum rate of X. But at the end of the day, it may be less, but that less may still be above that negative, that revenue. So you want to give yourself that option to have that decision. You're not going to, it doesn't mean you're going to raise it. I mean, you're not going to, it gives you a decision package in there. You know what the floor is, you know what the max is, but it gives you that ability. That's what we're going to be, I think that's what most cities are kind of saying out there through the state and others is, we're just not sure how it's going to work yet, so we're going to make sure to give ourselves places.
And I can see where it's going to be really beneficial when we're dealing with county taxes, for example, because something I've heard over and over is the county saying, well, we're holding the mill levy or we're lowering the mill levy, but my taxes keep going up. And so I think this will, will put a little more feet to the fire on that and saying, okay, well, you need to stop saying we're lowering your mill levy when ultimately your tax bill keeps climbing. Um, I was in a meeting three or four weeks ago, and it was an LPM virtual meeting, and they said they were still working out some of the pickups with our schools going to deal with this. Who's going to, who's going to take care of what? And so it might be a good time to reach out to LPM and the state and say, hey, these are the hurdles we are seeing and having to jump through so that while they're tweaking everything, maybe we could go in and, and suggest, let's have the IRBs included in the first batch before it's just incongruous or moving.
Well, but I think the legislation got passed separately without that.
It did.
Yeah.
They're just tweaking how to deal with it.
And yeah, any changes are not going to be reflective in this budget season. Yeah. But I mean, we have, to your point, LKM's been pretty proactive as far as like, tell us how this is going to, you know, be, what are the, what are the concerns that you have with this process and this timeline? What are the, what are the challenges you think are going to be there for, for your council, for your community based on these factors? And, and we've been communicating that as much as we can.
I think the good thing is our, I think overall, we've tried to do that, that sex, right? We, we've tried to put out there those, those decision points, trying to be proven, you know? Again, I, I think I showed you some stuff, you know, we've not, we've, we've lowered our, we understand values have gone up. What we got into was kind of more the, the, the tax, uh, firm, like, where the tax, as you recall, you know, what we've been able to do, you know, we're the only ones that, you know, we've reduced the tax. I'm not saying that we've. I'm not saying that we, that we, that it's been revenue neutral, but, you know, the state kind of, you know, the state always keeps the same mill. So we use that kind of basis, right? So if value goes up, their revenue goes up. That, that's kind of, that kind of is the base tag. What we've seen is, if I take that line, we're below that line for the most part. Most of our other taxing areas, if the tax burden is, you know, the neutral is 5%, they're growing at 7%, 8%. And, and we've been kind of below that. That, that's, that's kind of what we look at in the staff, is that burden part we can control. Right? So, I mean, mill levy and value, I mean, I don't even know why counties are engaged in it because it's a form, right? I mean, they give me a value, I apply a mill levy, and it generates this. In reality, that's the decision, you like body, that's the staff. If we need $2.5 million in revenue from property taxes during the city. Well, and I know my value is this, I can tell you, no way, it'd take 10 seconds. I don't probably need to send a, like, county, county, just tell me what my value is, if you're in the appraiser, we can do everything. But that's, that's not the process and tables, I understand. But it really is, it really truly is that, so it's three numbers. And it's a mathematical change since the beginning of time with taxation.
From a staff perspective, this is gonna encourage a lot of dialogue between us and the county, just making sure that we're getting the right information when we, when we statutorily required to get it and make sure that they have the same considerations that we have as far as things are going to affect the final valuation, which is going to affect the R and R. There's gonna be a lot of dialogue between our offices and the, the county clerk's offices and county treasurer offices in that respect. But these are the, this is the sandbox within which we have to play in this year and, and the rules that we have to play by and, or we'll shepherd through it as best we can. And that's, that's all I've got for the budget presentation, if there's any questions at this point. Short story is, especially in the general fund, we're doing well in revenues and we're being very responsible as far as expenditures go.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay, the next item is the city council discussion regarding Resolution R 34-21 of the Unified Government of One of Kansas City, Kansas, commending a local health order, 321-21.
I'll just give a very brief introduction. I, I know that, you know, I spoke to several of y'all, there was a private discussion about the county and, and, you know, what they were doing with health orders. Communities at their last meeting, they amended their health order. I hope you all have seen that, know, kind of know the standards. And they intend to revisit that at the end of this month to coincide with the orders that are applied predominantly in K C O and Jackson County. You know, I know there's a lot of comments and feelings and things. More of the sending the letter to the county, kind of expressing our overall. But really, it was just a discussion, my arrow, needed to be additional discussion. Now probably the best time for it, if there doesn't need to be any additional discussion. Again, they adopted, they modified the order, they changed some, you know, regulations. Required that to just reduce the opportunity. So really, y'all, place, you know, our discussion board, you know, obviously, they'll be back one day. The Unified Government has the health, whatever that, right? We've got to see maybe any information, plans, like plans. That's, that's all I have, my area. Yeah, thank you.
The floor is open for discussion, if there is none, we will move on.
Well, I, one of the things that I had brought up is that I think that Edwardsville, and I can only speak for Edwardsville, but I would think that looking at what Bonner is in the same situation as we are in, because we're two different cities outside of K C K, I think that it's time that we, Edwardsville, as a city, as our elected body, makes our own decisions on what happens in, in our city. And I, I think that the letter was fine. And I think that we need to have something voted on that lets the, the commission know, and also lets the, well, the, the Board of Health know, and it also lets the county commissioners know how we feel and how we want to be represented at the county level, that we should be able to make our own decisions. So I would like to see that we vote on something of, that, that a resolution that says that we want out of the mask mandate, just like what has happened south of the river in Johnson County, they're out of it. And if somebody else wants to be more restrictive, I guess the city can do that. But as this city, I, I'd like to be out of it and where we make our own decisions.
And I believe their hearing goes on.
Twenty eight, twenty seven, twenty eighth.
Well, I think their current order expires on the 28th hearing, but the commission meets on Thursday, so.
Yeah, 27.
I think that the various orders are all aligned on the 28th, so you would have a meeting on the 28th. That, again, that's our reason bringing up something staff needs to be prepared or to prepare. It'll be, as far as something in, to vote on it being a form of resolution.
Right. Well, I mean, we don't know what Kansas City, Missouri is gonna do, and it seems like we're following suit with Kansas City, Missouri. So I would like for our county elected officials to know how we feel, not what Kansas City, Missouri prefers. Prior to that Thursday meeting.
I agree. I would just add that throughout the process, the, the goalposts have been moved several times from the beginning. One, when you look back at the original statutes and things, they, they have the ability to, they can do countywide, but it doesn't have to be a countywide mandate. And when the vaccines had come out a few months ago, they've given priorities to difference. It posts, all of the priorities it posts were in Kansas City, Kansas, Edwardsville, and Bonner Springs got zero priority when those came out, which I think reflects our positivity rate and the, what they're recording through the health department. Our numbers are just a lot out lower, we're in a different scenario than beyond town, Kansas City, Kansas. When we're communicating with that, with the commission, I would just remind them, and we can get updated stats. But when I looked up today, again, the, the intention was to slow the spread. We have significantly done that. March, April, and May have hung out right about 3% positivity rate in Kansas. And so we have definitely gotten to a point where we are slowing the spread. The other intention was to keep our hospitals from being overrun. Of the 785 staff ICU beds in Kansas, only 57 are being used for COVID patients. And of 848 ventilators, the entire state of Kansas, only 15 are currently being used for COVID patients. So again, I just feel like we have surpassed the goals that they set originally. And if you were on the last meeting that the health department hosted, you would have heard that they intend to continually move those goalposts as they lower the age of who they'll give the vaccination or the shots to. So that percentage will be a less percentage of the population who have received the vaccination. And so they'll be less toward their target number as they have it open to 14-year-olds and then to 12-year-olds. And so that goal is just gonna keep moving back and back and back. So I just think it's time to, to say, okay, let's, let our cities opt in or opt out and let the other closest to the elected officials make those decisions.
I think to piggyback off of what Carolyn was saying, is that they, they were trying to achieve a 70% vaccination in Wyandotte County. And when they were currently at, and I, I may get this wrong, but 36%. But just like Carolyn was saying, we're at 36%. Well, if you've got, if you look around the, the county, if you want a vaccine, you can go get it. I mean, it's, it's, it's out there, it's free, and I encourage everyone to go get it. But if you want one, it's there, it's out there. It's not like it's hard to go get. So the 36% that we're at now, it's going to, we're not gonna move forward in that number because when they back up, I think the age was 16 now, is that right, Carolyn? 16, and then when they, they drop it down to age 14, well, guess what? That 36% doesn't go up, it goes down of people that's been vaccinated. And then when they go to 12%, they, they said that on that last meeting, that it'll go, it'll drop down, it'll drop down more and drop down further. We're not, we're not getting closer to 70%, we're moving away from 70%. So, again, the vaccine is out there, I encourage everyone to get it. I want people to, if, if, if you can, you can get it, I want you to get it. But I also want you to feel safe in your decision and getting what, what you feel like. But we, we need to be able to govern our own city.
And I was, I was gonna mention too, for months at this point, if we were all at a restaurant sitting at the same table, you know, Florida. So some, there's just, there's just some, we're, we're past the point that we were in last March, last April, when everyone was really worried about it, and rightfully so. We didn't know what was happening, we didn't have, we didn't treat it, and we didn't know what was going on. But we, we've learned more, our numbers are way down, the vaccinations available for those who want it. And so it's just trying to keep up with those around us. And I think that, that we are confident in, in businesses and, and where people are going to, to support businesses in the community as well.
I think the thing that bothered me most about that call was the callousness towards businesses. And, and with Johnson County releasing, you know, relaxing, there's quite a bit, is that we're running business to Leveux County and Johnson County like crazy, and we're putting our business owners at an unusual, unreasonable risk. The comment was made that there was a study done that showed only 10% difference. You know, that it was only a 10% difference. I would, I would argue that for most businesses, 10% is the profit margin. And so I would suggest maybe the government try to operate on 10% less to set an example for the businesses in Wyandotte County. So that to me was a horrendously cast view towards the citizens and the business owners, taxpayers in Wyandotte County.
And if somebody should want to wear them.
Yeah.
Wear them, I mean, that's, that's great, that is, that's, that's no problem at all. That it's just saying that we suck over governing our, our citizens and to let people, churches, businesses make those decisions for themselves.
Before we move on, would our counselor have any advice to give to the council on, on such a move?
Well, I don't know exactly what your next step would be, what you're wanting to do, or whether it's to adopt a resolution at another meeting. Or I don't, I'm not exactly sure what we're, what format it can be. I think my comments from the previous meeting would just go stand whenever you're looking at doing all of this, and we're not, I'm not, definitely. I think anything beyond that would probably be some discussion if we wanted to go into it a little bit more.
I'm confused, go into it a little bit more. It's pretty clear to me, pretty simple to me.
Well, yeah, there are issues that you're not considering. I think that the legal advice may advise you not to do. But we need to have an, we need an executive session or advice from our council.
I think that my comment from last year probably would be more appropriate for an executive session, but we were kind of on the fly with this situation. So I'm being cautious. Any discussion beyond what I could say at that meeting just may be more appropriate for an executive session because it is a kind of plain privilege. It doesn't mean that I necessarily have anything to add. It's just my wanting to be appropriate in this situation.
So can we go into executive session tonight? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and again, I'm not saying that I have any, necessarily anything to.
I thought, you were just saying she has something for us.
No, I'm just saying that if we're gonna have a more robust discussion about like earlier comments or additional comments for tonight, even reiterating them, I would feel more comfortable. Again, I don't think there would be anything to add.
Okay, my resolution, my, what I would like is that we adopt a resolution saying that the city of Edwardsville wants to opt out of the mask mandate. That's what I'd like to see. That's, that's.
That would be the next meeting, you have that resolution?
Yeah, we have to draft.
Yeah.
Yes, that way it can be, that way it can be presented to the Unified Government into the.
Before the 22nd.
Before that next meeting.
And so, just so I'm understanding, if we're not, the resolution wouldn't say Edwardsville is opted out, it would just be saying we would like the county to allow us to opt out.
Right.
Yeah, I think that, 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 you know, if there are legal questions around, you know, authority or rights or, hey, does this, if you take this action, could it lead down to some other path, like the appropriate place for that? We didn't need an executive session. If there's any legal, you know, I mean, if you told us to go out and drive all of our cars through red lights, you know, we might say, hey, wait a second, we probably ought to have a discussion about why is that idea, right? And I know it's just you to go, wow. So if there's something out of that discussion, we're out of that resolution that we, or the council believe may need some further discussion around legal issues, liability. We would do that exactly. But right now, I think it's just drafting a resolution for consideration, taking in what I, what I think.
Well, let me, let me get this straight, here, here, here. And I, I agree, I, we need to, if we're gonna do this, we need to adopt a resolution. We don't need to hurry into an executive session now and have a session about it. But to bring to the council at the next meeting a proposed resolution and maybe even have an executive session to be advised by our staff as to the ramifications of that extraordinary resolution.
If you identify.
Yeah.
We identified any.
But as of right now, there's not any. I mean, you're just saying that we haven't identified yet.
Yeah, I have not thought, I thought of this more as the council wanting to concretely opt out, not as the council asking the county to allow us to opt out. So I had not thought of the resolution in that way. And so there's the, the questions of the mechanism to doing that or, or, or even looking at those options.
Yeah, and it's not unique across the state of Kansas for counties to have multiple cities. You know, the city can be more restrictive, you know, not, not, if they, if they elect to. So that's all we're asking, you know, allow us to. We've, we've been under that, the guideline now of the county for this amount of time. And we feel like we've attained a, a level of, whatever that may be, you know, vaccinations or the, the rate, that it's time for us to be able to now do it on our own.
Do you have those stats for Edwardsville?
They, well, we did.
Does it, but how does it pose Casey?
Well.
It makes it a little.
That, that, they already reported it by saying.
Right.
They all, so here's, here's what I would like to say is, if we're gonna get that resolution,
and it looks like there is some issues, I don't want us on the 24th trying to go on, well, we don't know if we're gonna have everything figured out before it can be sent to the U G up before the 27th, because that's when the meeting is. So if we identify them early enough, and if we need to have a special meeting, then we do that. So if we identify them early enough, and if we need to have a special meeting, then we do that. And that's the only reason that I was saying, can we have executive session tonight? Is if you had already identified something that we needed to hear about, then we could take fifteen minutes and hear that tonight. So I'm not, not to brush into anything at all, just to have, actually, to be quite the contrary, so that we would have more time to be thinking about it, not waiting until, um, two weeks from now until we have our next meeting.
There, there was, it was brought up, our letter was brought up during that meeting.
I'd like to have seen it.
By, um, I think, I can't remember which, which.
It was, uh, I believe it was Commissioner Philbrook.
Right. She brought it up and, and said it before the, the Public Health Department. And it was stated that, the lady with the health department stated that, for fairness, she thought it should be an entire county process. If we are not allowed to opt out, I think we ought to pursue the fairness. If it's fairness for us to be included in the restrictions, it's fairness for us to be included in all of the county benefits. County equipment sharing, county money sharing, county cemetery maintenance. You know, if they're using that equipment on city, Kansas City, Kansas properties, it should be allocated, we have four point five percent of the population of Wyandotte County. We, if, if, if we do want a fair, if they want to treat fairness for the whole county, and they decide not to give us opt-out, I think we push hard on the fairness. I want to know the hours that equipment's being used, that county equipment is being used in cities. Uh, if fairness is what they want, fairness is what I want.
I, I think we have, all right. So, so I, just to summarize, the direction will be, we will compare a resolution with consideration around, uh, you know, around both, right? So, so effectively, I think you got to the point earlier, we can always have a, we can have a more restricting regulation, we can't have less. The only way for us to have that option is that the county, uh, effectively terminates, either terminates its mask order countywide, right? And that gives each, the three cities the rights about whatever ordinance they want, or they put in their order that there's an opt-out. I mean, those are the two, but I, I don't know another way to get that.
And I don't know that there'll be a decision made on Thursday night, but I want that, this to be there for that discussion. And I guess what I'm hoping is that Kansas.
I think they do have to make a decision because they're, they're, they're.
Oh, it expires at midnight.
That either, either have to expire.
Maybe Kansas City, Missouri. Maybe Kansas City, Missouri will opt out early enough in the day, or terminate their, that, that, then we can follow like we do. And, um, this will be a move point.
We could just send a copy of the letter to KCMO as well.
Send it wherever you like.
Let us know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I, I thank you for the time. Okay, thank you very much. So, so we're into the city manager report? Uh, yes, sir, you have the written report before you. I don't really have anything to add. I would like to maybe reiterate about the, first and foremost, congratulations again to Chief Widdam on his credential as Fire Marshal. As you know, he also brought a year ago, I think it was, went through the credential for Fire Office, so. Sorry, uh, so, and so now he must be up for renewal of that. So, you know, that's not a one-time thing, that's an ongoing professional accreditation that, you know, you don't just do a one-time done, it's ongoing, so congratulations on that. Uh, I know we'll have more information about this, but as you know, we, we have two employees, both that have had a long career with us, that have announced their plans for fire this year. That would be Fire Captain Dan Johnson and Lieutenant Doug Hermling. So both of those gentlemen have been with the city for quite fun, and they've both announced their intentions for fire. Uh, and we will be having some activities around those retirements. So, uh, again, two big losses, open, great employees that will continue to support the bus. We need to support them. Other than that, Mayor, that's all I really have.
Thank you. Zach, do you have anything to comment about the upcoming cleanup day?
That wasn't a lead-in, too.
Uh, yes, it's, yeah, a matter of fact I do. Uh, citywide cleanup returns is Saturday, starts at eight o'clock. I'll be here around between seven, seven-thirty. Uh, dumpsters will be, thirty and forty-yard dumpsters will be set up in the parking lot, uh, Friday, throughout Friday afternoon. Casey disposal, the, the thirty-yard containers that they're gonna be bringing, they're actually gonna be able to pick those up later on, on Saturday, which will help us avoid having them out all weekend and then more people come in and dumping around them, if not inside them, so that's a big help. Uh, they'll be there sometime after one o'clock, and I told them, you know, typically the event runs from eight to, to noon, but they're about ninety-five percent full by eleven, eleven-thirty. Um, we'll be picking up the e-waste boxes at the end of this week. We'll have two forty-yard containers for scrap. Uh, we'll send out another email reminder and put some stuff out online about items that won't be accepted and make sure that people are aware of the household hazardous waste drop-off sites in Wyandotte County, that they can take a lot of those materials to. Um, yeah, so should be, I checked the weather today, and sure enough, it looks like it might be a little, might be a little soggy. But, you know, fingers crossed that that, uh, it's not, it's not too bad. But, uh, nothing we're not used to on, on citywide cleanup day. Yes, sir. If you guys have any specific questions on the event, then let me know. But, or if you've not let me know already that you'll be there, um, just shoot me a note so I know what to expect and order for lunch, and it should be a fun day, usually is.
Thank you, Zach. Hey, we'll start with the council, Jack Adams. Margaret, you're responsible for donuts.
Yes, I let Zach know that, too. I thought you were gonna announce it, yes. They will be there.
Chief Widdam, congratulations, that's great. Really proud to have a change of caliber in our fire department. And it just continually reminds me how blessed we are with both fire and this department. They have such great leadership, and I know, I don't know if you did enough accolades for them, but we really, I personally really appreciate you guys, and being a face to those two departments. Thank you very much. I gotta, I gotta ask this question to the driving guys. There's still poles up along Hundred Tenth Street. What, whose poles are those and why are they still there?
Uh, those are, uh, that, the poles are Casey, you know, averaging poles. The only thing left on them is the fiber, and they're doing the cut of, they're, they're cutting it over now. So they, they had to leave the fiber line up even though they put the new one on the new poles, but they have to splice all that together, so that's being done this week. And then those poles will probably come out as part of this, whether they come and do it or the contractor takes them out with the dogs, or they'll probably go on with them.
Um, the contractor we use for the taller, just under review, just a little bit west of, of Hundred Second.
Right.
Uh, we've never used them before, ever.
We have not.
They did a nice job, they did a really nice job, especially for the money. So I would put them on the top of my list.
Is that Blue Moon or Blue?
Blue, Blue Moon. Blue Moon, I think exclamation.
Yeah, they, they did, they did quickly, and they did a nice professional job, and it looks great.
They're out of, I think, Smithville.
Yeah, so, uh, we need to keep them on the top of our list. I think they're working on, oh, I'm amazed that they're, they're working there. And a couple of months ago, we had a work session on the city center deal, decided to kind of put that, set it aside for just a little bit. And, uh, I would like for us to continue to, to plan for the future. We've, we've got a police department, we've got a fire department that really is crunched in their, in their buildings, and we need to, to keep our eyes focused on the future and not get bogged down in the present. I would like for us to consider maybe going ahead with an engineering study so we can know what we're dealing with on this property, uh, know exactly what we're dealing with and, and to prepare for future development of, of, of facilities for our public safety in City Hall, whatever order we do it in, however, but that's, money's already been allocated, that's kind of like, so we know what we're dealing with, is an estimate.
I think one of the pieces to that, and I, and I communicated with, with the council from, from some of the whole, you know, I think one of the first decisions is just trying, you know, relative to the fire police, which was kind of the direction that's given by, you know, is, from a, from a site selection, is do you, do you go to the north end of this lot where nothing's there now, right? Or is the thinking, we're going to try to take the existing fire station and add onto it police and fire? So, to take police and fire is all we're talking about. I mean, those really are options, we need to acquire additional property and probably just generate some cost. Uh, so, if you have a chance, just give me your feedback on that. I think then we can come back and at least give some direction, and it's a long process. But then, just to tell you the truth, I don't know what the scope of work could be, and so I kind of have a little better understanding, you know, build on, you know, kind of green land or try to modify an existing structure, you know, with our, with our public safety, that's all we're talking about. That, that really will allow us to give you better advice as to what maybe those next steps are, what we need to do, that one.
I just want, I just want to keep us focused on the future, not get bogged down in the present. We do have, we have present needs, we do have present needs, and we're gonna get greater with the feedback to you.
All right.
Uh, hold on.
You took it away from me, that's why I was gonna bring up the best of public buildings. I think we need to definitely concentrate on a facility for our, for our people. I think what we've got right now is an embarrassment, and we're trying to bring people in there to help and develop and so forth. Thank you for Hundred Street, could use a little more maybe eventually down there. By the, it's, it's better. Did you find anything in there? We got a little bit of, did you find anything in the hole up? Gold bars, I'm not sure. Nobody, money didn't bounce out of their pocket from the ATM. I was gonna ask Chief Widdam about the drone. You know, I watch the races every week, and I think probably the best driver at any of the NASCAR races is the one who flies the drone. Have we got anybody that's suited to that capability yet with it?
They're, they're pretty good. There, we have two that are certified training level pilots, commanders, and they've, they've been training several of our other officers so that we have a complete pool of people that can access it at any time that we need it. So they're out practicing, they've deployed in deployments already, and they're pretty darn good with it. So, and it's a really technically advanced piece of equipment that, you know, barring any unforeseen accidents, it comes back home, it does all the things through programming. So, uh, their, their flight skills are pretty tough down there. Yeah, keep it in, that's all we use.
I appreciate that. Do you have cattle braun attachment on it?
No, not that, not that feature.
Okay, and then the last thing, how many positives and negatives have we got on the sign at Four Hundred Two Riley? Uh, I don't know that I know the number. Uh, I think if you all, you know, there were quite a few comments about that on the Facebook page. To summarize them, it was generally, uh, we think money could be better used for other purposes, I realize that, you know, sometimes people understanding the whole perspective, but, but there was some, probably people that made comments, made a comment, made it more on the negative side. And that, the people on positive typically were, you know, a thumbs up or something like that. I, I don't know that I have a, a good answer to the question, or plus minus. I think it's something that probably needs to go into discussion as to how we go forward, which was part of the reason, to try to do something temporary and not, you know, make sure that it's the right place, right. I mean, some people said, hey, I don't see any value in it, others said, I see value in it, but that's not the right place. You know, maybe you do it in the north end of the future, or, or, you know, about this. And, and again, sometimes people say, well, why don't you take that money and go spend it over here, understanding that, you know, you got different buckets of money, and you can't just mix them all up and come up out. I don't, I mean, it might be something wrong to ask you, but maybe if you could kind of take a little tabulation of the drones and the climate from the public, it would probably make the decision for us a little easier, on whether it's a, that's, uh, which it might be out of my mouth, but that's just kind of what I was thinking about. I personally, I wanted the sign so bad that I'm not really, I don't like what I'm seeing then. More of a distraction or it's not noticeable enough, but there's just something about it that's not fitting. That's my thing, that's all I've got.
Margaret?
So, to piggyback on the sign, I did read all the comments, but I did, I think there was one or two. Um, Gallup used to live out in Bonner, she appreciated the sign out there, so she was excited. With no more paper, with our bills coming at a postcard, you know, the, the ability to get the information out there, I just think is, we've talked about this and talked about this, how many people miss an event? How many people miss soccer signup? How many people miss the food pantry? How many people miss an event without not knowing? So I think it's our duty as the city to have some type of mechanism. Granted, maybe the place isn't the right place, but it's a stoplight where you know those people are gonna come through or stop. Majority of our city lives down here, so I don't know. I guess try it someplace else, maybe if you, at least it's not permanent, so.
Just real quick to that point, uh, we have transitioned to the postcard-sized utility billing statements on a bi-monthly basis, but we're gonna stick with the paper newsletters on a quarterly basis. So the next one of those will come out, um, next month, actually. So we're, we're gonna keep with, keeping in mind, a lot of people don't get their information from, from our, our online and social media resources. We're gonna be sending out paper newsletters, uh, on a quarterly basis in addition to everything else that we do as far as outreach goes, so just so you know.
It is a challenge, I mean, sometimes, I, I don't think it's, you know, people say, I had never heard about this, and you're like, boy, we've been talking about Facebook for two years, but they didn't, you know, and there's one they're talking about on Facebook, they hadn't heard about something. Somebody says, well, you know, the city put this out on Facebook, and they're like, well, you'll soon have these Facebooks, like, but you're on Facebook, I mean, you know, yeah, so, so sometimes it just, it be, and everybody gets information different ways, right? Like, I still have to rinse stuff off and re, I, I want that to be, and other people do all that on your screen and work on it. Trying to find multiple ways to communicate is, is pretty, that, that is one thing.
Congratulations, Chief Widdam, outstanding. Um, Zach, the, I think it was in the hot shot last Friday, the headstones in the cemetery. Oh, my gosh, I hope you've gotten good feedback on that.
They started, they started today, so he, our contractor was out today, did about a third of them, and I posted some pictures online, people, it, it's very noticeable with some of those stones, especially the older limestone stones.
I had a few neighbors comment, and I think it's just fantastic.
Yeah, it'll, he'll probably finish up by Wednesday, so it'll be done in time for Memorial Day. Um, and we've got about a hundred and four stones out there that'll get touched up. And especially, like I said, those older limestone ones really pop, which you get all the grime off of. But it's, it'll, it's gonna look a lot better.
They do, they look a hundred percent better. And thank you again, Zach, for the first quarter budget review, that is extremely helpful. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Carolyn?
Um, I was gonna mention the headstones, too, those pictures were unbelievable. Um, and that actually reminded me, I was driving through the city the other day and noticed some of our flag. some of our flags that are, are faded or cluttered. And I just wondered if we might be able to invest a few more to just get them to where they need to be.
He is our flag man, and I know we're buying, he paid, he just been delivered twice every year by the Memorial Day weekend. So they're brand new all the way across the city. This year as well, we bought two larger flags for holidays, Memorial Day, July Labor Day, for the hardens, various, that hardware is in, so we'll do that when we start getting out. Due to some maintenance on the bullies that the road has been helping, ready for Memorial Day weekend. We normally buy brand new, all with the flags every year by the time before the schedule report.
So we're going to buy, we're going to have some bigger flags, put out specifically for holidays, and then kind of normal size.
Normal three by five will be out every day. The bigger five, five eight will be out before the long holiday weekend, July, all of them.
That was perfect timing.
I knew he'd answer your question. I knew we'd have to schedule, but he did speak.
Awesome. Thank you for doing that. And congratulations on that. That was fantastic. I was going to ask if, there, there's been a little bit of talk about, we're not doing anything of our streets. We need to do more about our streets. And I know that, especially this last year, we have budgeted for street repairs, and we have actually completed some street repairs, and we have more on the way. So I was hoping maybe at the next meeting or the one after, we could just have a quick update on what we've budgeted for street repairs, what's already been done, and what's coming up, if that would be all right, just so people can be aware of what we're doing there.
Absolutely.
Last thing I have is just our report from our Edwardsville mobile pantry event last Saturday. It went really well. We only had 70 families sign up this time, which is a little bit lower than before, I'm guessing with the weather and street sports and things being out there. Not as many people become with us. Still quite a few folks that came and benefited from that event. We had some fantastic volunteers, including Deputy Fire Chief Morrow, who also came and helped out, which was fantastic. We ended up serving, it had been over 300 people that we were able to serve through that event. We also brought food to the high rise, the seniors down there, and stocked up on. So overall, a great event. Thankful to our volunteers and the weather that was just perfect back. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Jeff, Carolyn?
All right. Congratulations, Chief. Again, the fifth one to say it. But congratulations. And I echo what Carolyn said there about the street performance, what we've done, what our plans are to, what our next budget will look like as we're talking about budgets, road repairs, what that will look like. As, as important as the police and the fire department buildings are, and you talk about crumbling, and they, they don't get better, our, our roads are the same situation. And I want to make sure that we, that we are doing as much as we possibly can to, to get those roads up and, and safely travel. One of the things that I wanted to ask about was the shutting down of River View and 110th Street. There's been a lot of confusion, I believe, already as to what's going on there. You can drive around the barricades on River View and continue all the way into 110th Street. And I don't know if you continue to go west on 110th, if you can drive right through the barricades and head on out, I'm not sure. So that's promoting people, because it says through traffic only. Well, people don't know what through traffic only means, or, or where, depends on where they're going. So, and then, once you get through those barricades and you turn left, you go south, because I did it. As a matter of fact, I seen Chief Whittemore down there. He didn't know it was me, but I was in the black Chevy pickup truck, and even he had just left. And I, because I wanted to see for myself, I heard people talking about, and I thought, well, I'm going to drive up there, go around those barricades, like you can do. I mean, I didn't move any. I just drove around them and drove and made a left, headed south on 110th Street. And, and you get so far down to Speaker, and then here's two barricades.
You got that pulled up. So I think it was going to change a lot tomorrow. So I, I, I thought this question.
Now, I don't condone anybody moving anywhere. No, I'm not saying, but I just, I, before they get too late, and here's what I had heard somebody call, and I got a couple text messages about, before you're heading north, there's signs on K-32 that say your 110th Street's closed, but then you drive all the way up and you pass all available places to turn around, and then take, and then you get Speaker, and you're stuck at Speaker.
We, we had recommended some modifications, and some of those didn't happen. But I'll, I'll use that, so if we, actually, let's move it up a little bit. So, so the sign, no, the other way, I'm sorry. So down at 88 and K-32, there's a sign that.
Yep, they put it up that end.
Right. And, and, and we, we said before, for the most part, people coming down K-32 aren't coming that way to go up 110th to get the I-70. They're going to already get four. So they will be moving that message for the fourth and K-32 north. So right at the corner, it'll say, you know, the same thing, 110th Street closed, it won't say at River View, but it'll say, it'll say closed, right? Closed ahead. So whatever the message. That message sign will be moved. We had them add, as you went up Edwardsville Drive, right at Shawnee Drive, we had, which wasn't the original plan, the road closed, through traffic sign, which that is up. And then up north, those signs that say road closed, through traffic, both on the east and west side of River View. The one on the east side should be at 98th Street and River View.
Yeah, it's, it's out about 107, 107th and River View.
So that sign will get moved back to, because Dusty and I talked on another time, who was those to be at 107? Yeah, so one at 107, one at 18. And then at the end, where the actual closure is, there will be road closed barricades that you can't go past. And then to the north, there is a barricade, so road closed.
That one is, that one is in place.
So effectively, what happened is, they took the plan that was originally prepared with KDOT, and, and KDOT, through our comments, made amendments to it, and they approved amendments. But apparently whoever the traffic people is, use the old map. I talked to the construction inspector today and said, that's not the way it was being implemented.
Okay. And I know it's probably, there's some tweaking to go along there, and that's why it's good to look at and see what's working, what's not working. I appreciate you guys working on this.
And of course, we try, you know, trying to keep people active. I mean, you know, on 110th Street, we, you know, we have one address that, that the driveway is inside the close zone. Obviously, they'll have to make arrangements, probably from the south to get to that particular address. And then, of course, on River View, they'll have to come from opposite directions. But, you know, mainly you have, we'll refer to the Stevenson property, but they're not really at, you know, they're not occupied. And then you have the churches occupied. But that's also where they put the construction trailer, like, then make sure they put something out. So obviously, they'll have to have accidents there. On the other side, you know, the carpenter's house is occupied, and next to it's occupied, then you have to make it long. So they'll have to make arrangements to keep those open.
Right.
They will be back in the morning again. Yeah, we, you know, and, and yet, it's one of those things where a lot of people, like, I haven't heard about it, I've seen it, and you know.
Well, the people that go and move the barricades, you know what, that's not, that's not right. I mean, I don't care if you knew about it or you didn't know about it. You don't move the barricades. You know, the ones that, the ones that's a stagger, when you drive around, hey, I get it. I understand. Because you, and, and there may be a little bit of a curiosity factor going on too.
I wonder what's going on.
So anyway, I know.
If they cut six feet out of that road and they go, and there's a signal drop, they will probably figure out the road is.
Well, that may, that may go upon some pursuits. But anyway.
They wouldn't stop with some food. Anyways, so that's the plan, just so you can see and highlight.
Got you. I'm glad that we addressed the CARES Act, the dollars that were allocated for this sign. It's not out of our general budget, our general dollars to be spent on this sign. It was the CARES Act dollars that was allocated for this. And going back to the sign, I hate the location. I, I looked at it, I, I think it's way too busy. There's too much going on there. It's not, it's not the, in my opinion, it's not the location. I would rather that we set them dollars back, and until we identify somewhere that, and it, and it may be up north at 110th and the roundabout, I have no idea. I'm not saying where, where it should go. But I think that doing what we did, putting up this temporary sign and not spending a single dollar was the right thing to do for us to be able to get input on. I don't know where, I don't know where we move it next, but it sure is easy to move that sign to get feedback and, and decide where we move forward with that. So, but.
The message on the sign now talks about the weekends activity. So we, we set it to where it was on the two faces, and then as of, I think it was the day, we changed it over to say the cleanup day, which also is a good way to see what's happening, what people see and what people think.
Yeah. Okay. Just don't line out there, just like others did. I don't like the location. A lot going on there on that corner. And I know that that's, that's probably our biggest intersection. I get it. But if there's so much going on right there, that it's distracting, I don't, I don't think that it's. Anyway, I'm glad that we addressed that. The receipts regarding the police department on the fuel, if there's an ordinance, if we need to look at into that, that says that we need to, that we need to change that, and I'd like to see that sooner than later, that we, that we get rid of, get rid of that. And I'm not sure why I made a note of benefits. Not sure. But the last thing that I will say is the County Sci-Fi Road Project, that I think that you had sent some emails out asking about that. Do we have any feedback on that? And, and, and would you tell us what that, again, real quickly, what that Sci-Fi project is in, at the county, and what, what we would like to see happen?
So Sci-Fi was set up, they took one mill on the county side, right? So they, one mill.
And, and we did a run. Who set that up originally? When you say they set it up?
Yeah.
Okay. Were we part of it?
Oh, yeah. Years ago.
But we were part of it. But it was taken away without our consideration.
It was taken away in rear.
But with no input from us.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
So Sci-Fi, so they, they dedicate one mill on the county side, whatever. So, so of course, the county values, puts everything, all the city. They then allocated that money to the three cities, N-City, Kansas, Edwardsville, Bonner, Spring, using a formula that effectively took two things into consideration, population and laypeople.
Good.
So they would take that total amount, and then they would allocate it based on that formula. And each city would get that money. So that probably been gone for a many number of years. But I think the last year it was in place, I'm going to say around 2010, but I, I can go back to it, was probably at that time about 125,000, 125,000, 140,000 to the city, which at that point was around the equivalent of between three and four mills of power tanks.
$125,000 to Edwardsville. That can be used on road. And I'm guessing probably the same amount would probably have went to Bonner or a little more, a little more, right?
Probably closer to 200,000.
Right. And that was, that, and, and our current 2021 budget for road repairs in Edwardsville is what, outside of grants that we received, or STP dollars, or anything? What's, what's in our budget?
About 150,000.
So we could ultimately double our road repair, maintenance, and, and improvements by this program being brought back, right? And, and, and it was taken away from us without any consideration or discussion from us or Bonner, right?
We got, we got notice that they were making it out of the county budget, because they didn't, they wanted to, they held the line on the county budget, the mill budget, right? So they held it low, and reduced the KCK, the city side, by a, so from an, on an effect, it, it was an, you know, I mean, if we had to make up that money, the only way to do that would have been.
To raise our mill.
Either raise our mill or.
Or do away, or do away with some. So $125,000 in 2010. It, that, that's not a lot of money to KCK or the county. But that's huge to Edwardsville. I mean, when you're talking about being able to double our budget, today's budget on dollars, that's huge. So I think that you had asked, or someone had reached out to you to discuss, to ask about the Sci-Fi program?
Yeah.
And what is it, was, are we able, are we, I, I would like to see how we maybe incorporate that again, or bring that back, or a different aspect of that. We should be, the county, county should be responsible for road, some road repairs in some facet in Bonner and Edwardsville.
Yeah. I was going to try, but I don't know if I could calculate the numbers that you get from all of that now. Right. I mean, we know that our, what was not quite doubled here.
What was the response, or what did we get out of it? I'm going to try to put, call anybody out or please, I'm just, what is the?
I basically threw it out there. It was discussed, and that really didn't go anywhere. I guess that's the, I mean, there was no, no response saying, hey, we're going to, you know, have further consideration, official level, or mainly, I think, we'll discuss it with staff, and some changes will get back, summarizing. So to best my knowledge, there hasn't been any further discussion on that Sci-Fi part.
So we have, we have talked multiple times throughout my last six years here about having a meeting that would include the, the electants from Bonner and Edwardsville and the county in, in a meeting, in a roundtable discussion, talking of, you know, throwing our things up. And, and I, I specifically remember asking Mayor Alvey, when he was here, talking about that right there. Who, who needs to spearhead that? If it needs to be us, then I think that, I mean, I, I'm not vol, I'm not wanting to volunteer you, or, or, but if it needs to be me, or whoever needs to, I mean, because no one's out there advocating for us on things that we need.
I didn't reach out on that topic. And again, I said that there was interest by our council. I think I've got our friends with it as well. I got no certainty.
Okay.
I mean, I, personally, I think if.
I don't know how we get represented at the county level, and I didn't mean to interrupt, sorry. But I don't know how we get represented at the county level if the, if, and have our voice heard at the county, if no one's going to ever speak up and say something for us.
I would say that if you want to have that meeting, the mayor, it either, either the elected body, whatever mechanism individuals like.
Making up their best eloquence.
But need to say, we want this meeting, right, formally put it out there, or call a meeting and invite them to it. I don't know that, I mean, I know that, you know, I, I mean, I mean, the mayor, and I, and I know he, I say this all day, so, me, I know this has been raised a few times, probably in discussions between the mayors. I, you know, I don't know if it's led to any outcome out of there. But it hasn't seemed that there's been a strong inkling to, to put together, you know. And, you know, we've done it a couple times. Generally, it's been hosted by G at the Doris Mine Center. It was fundamentally more of the county responding, or, you know, kind of a county driven, I think, yeah, a UG driven meeting in, in that. We had two of them that I've attended.